Great. Mayor is potentially on her way. We think she's on her way. She is attending to some family business right now and could show up, but until then, I'll just be leading our meeting tonight. Good to see everybody. We'll start with a prayer from Councilmember Steve Stewart, and then Adam will lead us in the pledge.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for this day, how grateful we are for the opportunity to be here, to participate in the goings-on of the great city of Linden. We're thankful for our opportunity to live here and to work here. We ask for thy blessings upon us this evening, that all will be done in an appropriate manner, that we will be able to hear and give counsel as we go forward. We pray for our military and for our first responders, that they'll be blessed, and ask that thou would guide us through this evening, that we'll be wise and open to all that will proceed. We are grateful for all things, and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please stand and repeat the pledge after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Awesome. We'll go ahead and do our roll call, starting on my left with Steve.
Steve Stewart, present.
Van Broderick, present.
Cole Hooly, present.
Lincoln Jacobs, present.
Thank you so much. And then Jake should be on his way, and then we'll see if Mayor can join us. We have a few presentations. We are recognizing Bryce McConkey. He was selected in the employee recognition, and he'll be getting that award, so Adam will be presenting on him. Come on up, Bryce.
Thank you for being here. So, we have a quarterly employee recognition program, and employees submit nominations for other employees that have done a great job. So let me read what was submitted for Bryce here. Bryce is our chief building official, and has been with us how long now?
Almost two and a half years.
Two and a half years. Awesome. And was in Draper for a long time before that, so... Bryce is always so friendly, helpful, always so happy. He has had to fill in and do the work of two building inspectors. We're down as inspector right now. So, fill in the work of two building inspectors with the department being shorthanded. He works extra hard to get things done, so the city can continue running smoothly and keep contractors happy during this transition. Anytime I've had questions regarding my position duties, he has been helpful in resolving the issues. Thank you for all you do, Bryce. We appreciate all your extra efforts. Wanted to give you that $50 gift card.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You take your picture and you do a speech here.
Congratulations, Bryce. It's always impressive when you've got peers that nominate someone. It says a lot about your work.
Mike, do you want to introduce?
Our businesses all, they are phenomenal, too. So professional.
You guys are fantastic.
Well, we are.
Thanks, Bryce.
Nice job, man.
No, I'm on cloud nine. My baby girl just came off the plane from her mission. It was delayed an hour and a half, but she's here, so I got to touch her. It was all fun. It was an amazing day.
And then, Mike, if you want to introduce, we have a new member of our team, Brittany.
So, we'd like to recognize Brittany Wild. She's our new city planner. She came to us from Bear River Association of Governments as a regional planner, and excited to have her here. She's got a master's degree from Penn State, and excited to have her working with us. And this is her son, Anthony, so...
Anthony and Brittany, welcome. And you do know that you cannot leave for five years, right? Mike needs you desperately. We love having you. Thank you. Welcome to Linden, best city in the state.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Blessed to be here. We're so thrilled to have you. I don't think my mind is working. Anyway, so excited to have you on the team. Thank you. A great team. Thank you so much for joining. All right. Musical mics.
Pass one.
All right. Well, thank you. I'd like to welcome Councilmember Hoyt also here. And it's a great evening. The parking is filled to the max outside. I think we all had to park in unusual places today, but we're grateful that pool is full and people are enjoying it. We now, that concludes our presentations and announcements by staff. If there's anything by council, we'll move forward then to item number three on the agenda, which is our open session for public comment. And this is a time where anyone may come forward and address the council, state their name, if there's an issue they would like to speak on that is not on tonight's agenda. All right. Seeing no open session comments, we'll go ahead and move to item number four. This is our council reports. So, we'll have council, there's a lot to report here. I see a hand raised. Someone's excited. Councilmember Stewart, take it away.
I am excited. We've just come off a great week. I know probably everybody will comment on this, but want to congratulate our Parks and Rec Department for incredible Linden Days. Heath, Alan, Jamie, Tracy, McKendrick, Wade, and others, who put in so much time and effort into what I heard over and over was one of the best experiences that many of our residents have had, including those who come from outside our area. So, I want to give kudos to them. And along with that, as I'm the youth council liaison, and we had a great turnout from our youth council. They were at the car show, the ice cream social night out against crime, the rodeo, the parade, first responders breakfast, and the boat regatta, which I won't report on how we did there. It was not, it was not good.
It was a beautiful boat.
It was a beautiful boat.
There was some amazing spirit and guest appearances with that float, though, with that boat.
We had some Viking warriors.
Some Vikings, yeah, show up.
We, Steve may have an alter ego of Thor.
I felt powerful. But just really want to, again, say how great our youth are. We have so many of them that came, and they put in so much time and effort, and it was really incredible to watch them come together as a team to serve the city. But again, thanks to all those who put so much time and effort into Linden Days.
Thank you. Councilmember Broderick.
All right, cool. Thank you. Attended today, the Provo Bench Canal and Irrigation Company meeting. And we'll have multiple meetings in the next few months, determining the future of that irrigation company, along with other irrigation companies, that hopefully is all good news for the city of Linden, that will be a much more effective way to deliver our water into the secondary water system, which we're using partially this year. So, that is ongoing. Also, if you haven't noticed, there is some roadwork going on, seal coating going on on some of our roads, on Center Street and other places. So, we're always pleased to see roadwork improvements occur. That's always been a focus of our council, and I appreciate that. One last note, just talking with Juan on our water. Obviously, we haven't had rain much, and our consumption as a city is probably up about 10% on our secondary water over last year, but it's been very, very dry and no rain. And so, something to watch and be careful on how we water. And we are in a drought, and there's no way to sugarcoat that. So, need to use our water wisely. And part of what we're doing with the Provo Bench Canal and other irrigation company helps us use our water very efficiently, so...
That's awesome. Yeah, thanks. Linden Days was great. Heath and everyone, actually. It was really, really awesome. Thank you. So, today we have an item about the communities that care, that we'll be looking at renewing our interlocal agreement with Utah County to continue that. And they've just been doing a phenomenal job filling up all of their programming. We've had a lot of success with families attending the classes and the outreach. They've been doing a booth at the movie in the park, and that's been going really well and getting much more recognition. People are starting to connect the signs and the names, and it's going really well. They received acknowledgement that they got a grant to keep going, which is a huge feat, considering, I think they were saying, two other CTCs were shut down recently. And so, the fact that ours is continuing and got some funding is great. It wasn't as large of a grant as we've received in the past, so they're applying for a new grant through IHC to try to fill in some of those gaps. So, working really hard to do good things. And then, don't forget to vote for your school board seat. That's the only primary we've got going on right now in Linden, so lots of people out there campaigning really hard for their spot. So, just a reminder to get your ballots in.
Great. Councilmember Jacobs.
I think if every one of us spent five minutes just talking about Linden Days, it would be insufficient. It was, as always, spectacular. There were a couple different call-outs that I want to make. I sat there watching the Huck Finn fishing, and I just don't think anybody, anywhere, can do something like that, that is still country-like. Kids catch the giggles and the smiles on those little children's faces as they're catching live fish. It was just, it's awesome. Love that. Chief Brower, the bulls, I got them back to the mayor. We're good. No worries on that one. Thank you so much for everybody involved in Linden Days. We all got an email, I think, from Scott Martin relative to some ponderos and pine trees there adjacent to the park. I had a chat with Heath. Just, I know he's going to follow up, and Adam, your name was on that as well. I have no doubts you'll continue to work with him. Hopefully, we can come up with a good resolution on that. Brittany, again, welcome to Linden. And then, from our planning, Mike indicated that he submitted our annual moderate income housing report to the state last week, so good job, Mike.
Fantastic. Thank you. Councilmember Hoyt.
Fun, busy week at Linden Days. I, you know, father of four young kids, there's nothing better than Linden Days week. They look forward to it every year, and you do a great job. Appreciate being a part of that. I'd like to point out our police team. I've got an email today from Chief with all the things that were going on during Linden Days week, on top of the many, many things that they did. I love the leadership approach that Chief takes of having our guys and gals in the community, interacting. And if you're down there at that concert, you can't help but look around and see all the cops handing out glow sticks, doing different things at the parade, that you're so involved, you're an integral part of Linden Days. I love how all of our departments work together there. It's just a great feel, and so, just kudos to Parks and Police, and really, the entire city is, it's a, it takes all of us. So, appreciate everyone and all the efforts there.
Thank you so much. And want to thank Councilmember Hooly for pro-teming here until I could get in here.
Sure.
Fantastic job, all of you. Yes, cannot say enough to our Parks and Rec. They kill it. They really do. They don't sleep much, and we hope they're catching up this week a little bit, except the pool is still open. I don't think, they really sleep until the pool is done, right? Speaking of water, I'm grateful that Councilmember Broderick brought that up. Some, a couple weeks ago, we had a joint meeting with Saratoga Springs to explore their methodologies that they used in their metering. So, they installed their meters, and they are currently charging tiered rates for water usage. One of the things, one of the approaches we've taken in Linden, the meters are installed as required by state law, but we are wanting to collect data before we start charging the secondary pressurized water according to usage. One of the, we want to study it, and we want to do what's appropriate, so that we encourage keeping our little bit of country, you know, larger lot size. We don't want people to suddenly be paying such huge water bills that everything gets developed into lots, right? But we also know water is not an unlimited buffet, and as people conserve water, or we have upgraded systems, which there's significant infrastructure going in to diminish leaks and all kinds of things, then our water pressure can stay consistent, which, you know, helps everyone to not deplete our reservoirs. So, I think the main takeaway was, there's a system that we're working through, and I'll invite Juan to make a couple comments here. But the goal, I think, we have here in Linden is to establish, obviously, there's going to have to be tiered meter rates on the secondary water. That's coming down from the state. We can't give a free, unlimited use of our secondary water forever. That's just not going to happen. But we do want to establish a rate structure based on lot sizes, so that, you know, instead of charging the same for someone who has a little tiny, tiny lot versus an acre, and they both start getting, you know, penalized for water uses, you can say, okay, this, you know, your rate is X for a half acre, you're right. You get this much of a base for this size. So, Juan, would you like to kind of share with that? We don't know exactly a timeline yet. We're still collecting data. We do want people to start using the app, so that they can see how much they're using, identify better ways to conserve as their own stewardship of their own property.
Yes, we're in the process of data collection right now, data collecting. We do have a hiccup with our system that we installed. Problem with communicating from the meters to the sending unit to our, to Casell. We're working through those, through those bugs, but we're still in the data gathering process. Like Mayor said, we're going to analyze it, get a fair way of, establish a base rate based on lot size, and then from there, start doing the tier rates based on also those lot sizes. We have the entire thing here in Linden. We have really small lots, and then we have such large ones. And then, of course, we have the people that still have pastures and orchards, and we also want to be mindful of those people, not to overcharge them, and still make their open space profitable.
Yeah, one of the things I thought was fantastic, and I'm sure Juan will be doing this, is as we get to the time that we do have to start to tier the pressurized water rates, we can give people in advance in their bill, okay, you're, we're going to have to start charging for secondary usage according to the gallons that are used. Here's what your rate would be, based on what you're using today, so people can make those adjustments.
And also with our weather pattern, right, we use less water in the spring and fall, and in the summertime, we have this big
Peak.
Peak. So, that's something we're also analyzing. Do we have a seasonal tier rate? Or, but all those are still trying to see what other cities are doing and come up with the best decision possible.
I believe Saratoga shared, they do, try to do a kind of a flat rate, similar to what the utility companies do. But lots to, it'll be coming forth, forth, you know, at some point.
The legislature gave us till 2030 to implement either, one is the meter installation, but they also have that tier rate along that timeframe. So, we have a little bit of time, and we want to be very mindful and careful of what, how we approach it.
So, I have a couple questions. Back in the 90s, when some promises were, that were made, that really shouldn't have been made, that now state legislation has created laws that prevent us from honoring those laws, a lot of people are given base rates that they're paying year-round. Is a quarter acre lot and a half acre lot paying the same base from back then?
No, so, we have it by acre, by lot size. So, I think the breakdown is from 10,000 to 15,000 is certain rate, from 15,000 to 25,000 or 30,000 is a different base rate. So, we'll probably do something similar to have a, the base rate probably be the same, but then the tier rate is where we're going to have some fluctuation. But still, in the planning...
And I assume we've probably increased the rate from back in the 90s when it was first rolled out? Never?
To my knowledge, those base rates have never changed since 1993.
Oh, wow.
There's some people that still pay eight bucks
Okay.
a month to eliminate water. I think the highest rate is $50 for a large area.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? All right. And then, another thing that I'm really excited about, you know, Mountain Land Association of Governments, where I serve on the board, we've recently collaborated to have some suicide prevention signage put up in our trailheads. Chief, would you share for just a couple minutes about our suicide prevention signage, and how that's, the good that that's doing as well?
Yeah, so, a lot of the credit goes to, obviously, Jamie with Community That Cares program, but a few months back, we've, we've had some pretty sad, sad cases in our community with teenagers, and it hits home. Hits home to all of us personally. It hits home to me personally. So, we take it seriously. We're trying to do everything we can to coordinate and educate. We've been in contact with the Forest Service and come up with some ideas, signage, that doesn't really designate an area, but it says, you know, things like "you matter," some, something that triggers an emotion that says, hey, people care about you. So, we've been working. It's, it's, it's hard to get Forest Service with the government rules and regulations, so we're working to that end to get some approval. But hopefully, we can set some things up, working that way, and with working with Jamie a lot as well, and Passion. We, one of our detectives is very passionate about that, and it's been tasked on our end to be the liaison, so we're working to that end.
Wonderful. They mentioned Linden City as one of the premier communities that was partnering on this, and so, you've probably seen those signs in some of our parks as well. So, it's, we're grateful for the Communities That Care initiative and all that's going there. Hopefully, it'll make a difference. And then, the other thing, I just wanted to give a shout out to our local Linden Walmart. I reached out to them, and they had an extra amount of plants, you know, for seasonal there, and they donated some plants, so able to add some things to our planters along Center Street there to beautify. I just want to appreciate their community partnership with us here in Linden. They donate a lot, or whenever I, whenever asked, so. And then, the other exciting news, I have a couple points that I'm super thrilled about. It's been so many years in the making with, with many hands working towards this effort. Our Heritage Trail is just about to be completed, and either Noah or Heath, I know we've had so many hurdles with, with funding, and then obstacles with the railroad, and then getting those right of ways, and having to go ask for more funding from MAG, and, you know, just all the construction and the design and coordination with businesses. And it's going to be the first lake-to-mountain multi-use trail in our entire valley, and it'll connect up with Murdoch and Bonneville down to the lake, and it's pretty exciting. So, I'd love to invite staff to share. Noah, we were hoping it could potentially happen during Linden Days and do a big announcement there, but do you want to share Noah quickly?
Just that, that I think their last report I had, which was last week, I haven't received the report this week, was that there were two signs that needed to be put up right in front of Vineyard Public Works, but there's a wall, and they want to make sure that users of the trail do not get heated into that wall. Those are the last two things to be finished before the trail is essentially ready to, people are already using it, but before it's officially all finished.
And we want to express appreciation to Vineyard. They had built a permanent, what seemed like a permanent fence encroaching into the trailway. It looked like they weren't going to be willing to move it, but they did, just recently. I was, anyway, we went to bat. Thank you, team, for going to bat on that, to convince Vineyard to move that back, so we could have the trail where it's supposed to be. But it's going to, as soon as that happens, we're going to do, we want to do a ribbon cutting and a big announcement down there. So, it's a big accomplishment, many years in the making. And then, finally, I just wanted to mention, as you know, as part of that area down there by the lake, we have our future nature center, Utah Lake Authority, UVU Nature Center project. Again, we haven't done, you know, a big press release about it. We're trying to shore up some funding, but we do have some really good news. We initially had Congressman Curtis, now Senator Curtis, had garnered an earmark, but then, as you know, with the new administration, things were put on hold or eliminated, kind of back to the ground zero. But now, we have Congressman Owens, Congressman Curtis have teed up, now Senator Curtis, have teed up a new, we have 2.5 million, they're trying to flag here in the next budget. So, we'll cross our fingers and can get that going a little more down the path. So, still, still a wonderful goal, something we'll be excited to share with the community. All right, with that, that's all I have to report. So, I'll turn it over to item number five, our administrators' report.
Just, really the only thing, just an FYI, on our next two meetings are on a Tuesday because of holidays, and then, the meet the candidates night has been set for September 22nd at 7:00 PM here in this room, and I think that's it. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. All right. We're now on item number six. This is the approval of the minutes from July 7th, 2025, and the meeting held July 15th. Council, did you have a moment to review those, and any changes or adjustments? Now would be the time.
I have no changes.
I'm, I'm happy to make a motion if there aren't any changes requested, that we approve the minutes from Monday, September 7th, 2025.
And the 15th.
15th.
Did you say September? What did you say?
July.
Did I say September?
I think you did.
You said July.
Yeah.
He needs his Mountain Dew.
July 7th to 15th, I think it's.
Monday, July 7th and 15th.
Thank you. Very good.
I'll second the motion.
By Councilmember Jacobs, seconded by Councilmember Hoyt. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the minutes are approved. Thank you. All right. Item number seven is our consent agenda. These are items that are somewhat housekeeping. Items don't require any public comment or discussion, so we'll go ahead and turn this to staff to present the resolution and the equipment disposal.
Yeah, the Utah County interlocal agreement is for renewal of the CTC Communities That Care program. We continue to do a lot of work there. Jamie does a great job under the direction of Alan and Heath at Parks and Rec. And so, that's a renewal with Utah County, and just solidifying the funds that they have available for this coming fiscal year. And then, the surplus equipment disposal is listed there. It's just for your approval. So, any questions on those items?
I just had one question on the interlocal. In section four, manner of financing, it says, shall not receive separate financing. What is that? I mean, because we're seeking separate financing to keep it going, in addition to what the county is offering. I presume it wouldn't get in the way of us being able to get more grant money, but just was wondering.
Well, is it financing as in debt service?
Now that you're asking that question, Cole, I would have to check with their legal counsel and see what that means, so...
I get the part, it says they won't have a separate budget, but...
I think that's the intent, but the language, maybe we just double-checked that.
Thanks.
All right.
We need to chase some more money.
We can definitely chase that down before, before I sign it, so not a problem. Good catch.
So, do we just approve it?
So, if you want to approve that, subject to, we'll review this, and the mayor, authorize the mayor to sign it if everything's okay, so. If not, we'll bring that back to you.
Okay. If there aren't any other questions, I'm happy to...
Well, I wanted to comment on our safety device that we walk through every time we come here. It just has never been turned on in the last...
Yeah, after, after COVID, we used to have bailiffs that would come in and man that. We've got a new judge, Judge Sessions, just doesn't see a strong need for it, and we have not turned that on since 2020. We've not manned it. We decided to save on the court budget by not hiring bailiffs to come in and paying for them. And our police department's really responsive. They're right across the street. There's only, I can't think, I think there was one time, Chief, we needed to call, and they were here in two seconds. And it was just, somebody was a little upset with, with the decision of the judge. And so, talking with Judge Sessions, he just doesn't foresee a need to, to do that, so that's why we're surplusing that.
Is there any harm in just leaving it there and making everybody think it's working?
No, if you want to do that.
There's no harm in that.
If I'm not mistaken, aren't, aren't a lot of those meetings still online rather than appearing in person?
Yeah, the majority, we, we have, we have one in-person meeting every, where the judge is in court. Now, the courtroom's open if people, we set up computers where they can come here and access it if they need to, but, but we have, it's about one court session a month when the judge is here.
Man, I have had residents say, so if I go through this door, it's going to detect, but that door is not, so I don't know that it's good to have it.
I think it looks nice and clean.
Not a big deal. I was just curious. I'm okay with it.
Awesome. Then, I'm... Awesome. Then I move to approve the consent agenda items with the note to follow up on the phrase in the contract about the separate finances.
Well noted. We have a motion by Councilmember Houli.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Stewart. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. All right. So our, we'll just give staff a moment to finish notes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Plus equipment. We're all good. Okay, so item number eight, this is a review in action. We have a bid award for some park master planning services, and I'd like to invite our Parks and Rec Director, Heath Bateman, to come forward. And welcome, Ron Clegg, our amazing, talented grant writer that.
This is the the famous Ron Clegg. Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Very famous. You have no idea. I just want to make a comment as a resident. I am so grateful for all the things that go on in the city. I don't say much, but I drive around the city and I see the planter boxes and I see all the detention basins getting built and roads getting paved. And and I know how much work that is because that's the world I live in. And I'm just grateful for all of that. Also, on the suicide prevention thing, one of those kids that committed suicide is was in our ward. And so I saw how devastating that is. And he went up in the foothills and shot himself. And would a sign have stopped that? I don't know. But I it's brutal. Yeah, so it may have. I don't know. So anyway, we're here to talk about this RFP and getting, I'll tell you a little bit of background to this. So I helped get recreation funds for Heath and and for and I've been doing this for quite a few years. And so I know when they come out and and the state now has about eight or 10 different recreation grants. And Linden is always a little bit reactionary because we have a lot, but we're not really prepared. So we can't really pursue some of those. So this year, we decided we're going to get ahead of the game. And we're going to go out and do some master planning up on the East Bench and down in the Linden Hollow and then at the Thornton property. So when the grants come out in the first of the year, we're prepared and we can pursue as many as we want.
Yeah, one of the things that we've found, and Ron, working with you, you're so fantastic, is he shows us what the other cities do in their proposals, and they really have a sharp package put together. And that's what's winning a lot of the grants now.
Yeah. So with the state being so progressive in advertising this fund, there's a lot more people applying. So it used to be when we did Creekside Park, we were the only one who applied. And now there are lots. And so I met with Adam and Heath and the mayor, and we said, we got to up our game a little bit and be more prepared for these. And so we I helped Heath, we put together RFP to go out and get a consultant to help master plan those three areas. They submitted their proposals. The way that the the RFP was written is cost is a part of it, but it's not the only part. There, and this is typical of professional services that I deal with. So it has a firm qualification section, it has a project team section, relevant experience section, a schedule section, and the cost. Those are all have different points allocated to them, and the consultants are aware of what the point breakdown is. And so they submit based on that. So we had, we sent out four to four firms. We got three responses back and reviewed those. I reviewed them, Heath reviewed them, and Noah reviewed them all independently and came back that Civil Science would be the best for this project, even though their cost's a little bit higher. And the reason is these projects are kind of unique because there's a fair amount of infrastructure stuff that has to go on. On the East Bench, there would be some utilities, depending on what we do up there. Down in the Hollow, there's a detention basin, there's a parking lot potentially, there's a building in remodel. There's just a lot of stuff that's not just landscape architecture stuff. Same over at the Thornton property. And Civil Science has an engineering division where the other firms that submitted have to go out to a third party to hire the engineering part. So we felt like Civil Science would be the best fit for the city, even though they're a little bit more money. The way they broke down their money fit, they had an adequate amount, we felt, for each of those different projects. One of them was less money, but they only had a few thousand dollars for the Thornton property. And we thought that probably is not adequate. And so, and I've worked personally with Civil Science, the people that will be on this project, and I have confidence they'll do a really great job. And I think Noah and Heath feel the same way. So that so we're here to recommend them and answer any questions.
How long has it been since we did our Parks Master Plan?
We're on about the sixth year. It's my plan to to update that part, the general Parks and Recreation Master Plan next year. So this would, this would include all of the city's properties and some future planning, along with the general plan. But these are specific for these parks.
And these three were not involved in the Parks Master Plan, Thornton, because it wasn't acquired. Why were the other two not put on the original master plan?
Yeah, that's a great question, Jake. They were included, but not, they they have just simple amenities listed for what are our IFP and IFFAP, anyway, those important documents. They were, they were just listed on you can do this to this park still, add some tables, and they were very brief. We've had some discussions with the mayor about maybe looking at the city park in a little bit different light. And we've got an opportunity to look at it that way. And the East Side Bench was not included in any master planning up there.
One of the things when these applications go in is they want a fully fleshed out, like, engineering estimated costs. You know, there, there's some legwork that has to happen on an engineering side. And a lot of times in our master plan, we just said, okay, here's some potential options, but nothing's been fully vetted, or we don't know cost.
There's no site plan. There's no map of these. So they were in the master plan. Think of that Parks Master Plan like our general plan for land use. And so it says, yeah, we envision a park here. And there's a list of here's some potential amenities, but there's no site plan. There's no map. There's no layout. So this step would be hiring a consultant to now go look at that property and say, oh, here's what we envision. Here's the list of amenities you guys said would be in your general plan, in your Parks Master Plan. And here's where we think they can fit, how it lays out, how parking and access and utilities would all fit. So this is going to that next step of developing a site plan.
So the site plan allows us to be a little more dangerous when it comes to grant proposals? And and really, it's required.
You can't submit without some.
What type of grants would we be receiving dollar amount wise?
Well, based on, let's just pick the Hollow because that's probably the most complex. So you've talked about new road down there, terracing the hillside, maybe fixing that existing building to have restrooms, relocating the base or eliminating baseball field and putting in parking, making the other baseball field better. So there's, we need a detention basin down there. So all these things kind of need to happen, and some of them conflict. So so the more we can vet that out, the better off we'll be. The other thing they require is that there's some public input. And they don't want to give a city money, only find out their citizens don't want.
Don't want it, right.
So that's another part of this is there's some public involvement with these.
Open houses with actual.
And they'll be, there's also some budget in there to come back and present to you guys their findings. So we're just trying to be better than the competition.
To your question. What about dollar amounts? Ron, I know you've been extremely successful in grant procurement for the city. What do we tie in dollar amount wise? I'm just trying to think, I'm trying to think of it as an investment. Hey, we're going to invest a significant amount for this study. What do we hope to get in return?
Well, the largest recreation grant, it's a federal grant, land and water, that one, you can get three million.
So hundreds of thousands to millions.
Per per park.
Per site.
And you can break out the different elements if we have a plan for, you know, say, we do the terrace, the hillside one year, and we do.
Kind of like we staged that park. We did the big grant. We got the the rodeo, you know, the horse arena redone, awarded what was 115,000 we got. So we, with certain things, we we list out all the amenities and maybe we tackle different grants where they can fill a niche. So once there's a master plan, you can use that master plan to go after certain amenities or the whole package, just depending what fits.
So I think it's a good investment for the city because I think you'll more than recover that amount in grant funds. But until we have that, we're losing out to other cities.
Like Ron has said, we we just this last cycle tried to submit some things, but we, you know, what was successful in the past, where we would submit, you know, some lovely letters and some general concepts and things, it just didn't cut the mustard anymore. The competition has really increased. And so they really want more professional design and engineering and and all that, ready to go.
And it's really better for the city. I mean, it takes the guesswork out of it.
We know what we're into. Yeah.
I struggle sometimes with these studies. They're they're so expensive. And and I I think it's, I I understand the purpose. I guess, I I struggle, I think about how how much did we pay for our Parks Master Plan six years ago? Hundreds of thousands of dollars? And how much use? I'm sure your your department uses it all the time. And and yet I think of all the parks decisions we've made over the last six years, there haven't been a ton that we've been like, oh, we got to look at that Parks Master Plan. That's going to give us the data. And and so I'm trying to wrap my head around, what are the, what are the benefits? And it certainly, I imagine benefited you and and the hundreds of thousands of dollars that you've gotten us. I struggle when they get outdated so quickly. I mean, we, do we remember the dollar amount for the Parks Master Plan? I know it was hundreds.
It was not hundreds. I'm certain.
A hundred?
It was under a hundred.
I don't think it was even a hundred.
I think it was 80, 85, I think. But I can look that up.
So and keep in mind, that Parks Master Plan was required by the state, state laws in order for us to update our park impact fee.
Right.
So that we can collect that through building permits. And so there's, there's a connection there that that's required to income that then we are receiving to help pay for that infrastructure. And so.
I guess I'm misunderstanding the scope. That seems so big. This seems like three different parks and has a similar price tag. I I guess maybe I'm misunderstanding the scope. This is three specific sites. I I guess I I bring this up simply because if if there is, because they become outdated, we're six years later and and we're looking at redoing it.
This isn't redoing, sorry, I think you're getting that confused.
No, he just, he just mentioned that that he's looking to update it.
That would be.
This is separate from what you're discussing tonight.
I agree.
Okay.
But this is a study, and 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 we're talking about these studies.
This is, this is more diving into specific design.
I guess my comment is this, because these studies expire, I imagine we would probably want to feel pretty confident that we are moving forward with projects here because, for example, the East Bench, I don't know that I've seen anything on the East Bench as a council member. And and it's, if that's 10 years away, I don't want to include it in this study and pay, maybe its portion of this is 20,000. If we're not imminently going to do that, and we're just going to have to update that in 10 years.
That's fair.
Can I ask a question to follow up?
Yeah.
When you use the term expire, does it expire or is it updated? It's just updated. The Parks and Rec Master Plan, the the main master plan that we used from the state, we'll only update that. We'll ask them to run the numbers on what we currently have. It won't be a redo. And so I anticipate that cost being significantly less than. And that was going to be my next question to Jake. It should be. I don't know what the engineers' inflation in prices are doing. I was pretty surprised at the prices that all three of these gave us now. But we got to figure the scope.
And I think to Councilmember Hoyt's point, it is true that once we are deciding to design a park and we want to go after grant funding, grant funding always does require matching, right? So we have to be prepared budgetary wise. If we get a windfall of a grant and want to utilize it, we have to match it to a certain extent. Sometimes there's ways to stack them. Sometimes it's a 50/50. Sometimes they can be stackable. And if you are concerned about this, you know, consultant group doing these three parks and the scope of work is more money than you want to outlay right now, refine it down. Pick one park, pick two, eliminate one, change the scope of work. I know we've had a lot of residents come and say, we want more pickleball. And as you remember, over the past years, when we said, oh, we've got this East Bench property, there wouldn't be noise issue up there. It would put eyes on the mountain. Right now, we have some mischief and a little bit of crime in our foothills. And so if we have a park and, you know, lighted pickleball at night, it's kind of a win-win. I think our chief mentioned, you know, that could be a win-win. So we talked about this East Bench, let's explore this park. And so I think if we put a little, you know, Ron is literally amazing and fantastic, and he doesn't require a big upfront cost to work with us. He's, he's someone who's willing to go after this this free state or federal money. And he's just trying to help us continue to be successful in that.
Certainly, that understanding that this is a must in getting grants is a, is a big portion of this, a significant reasoning why it's justified.
Maybe we just hold off on that because we don't know if we're going to, you know, utilize that differently, maybe recoup costs there for putting in that road. Maybe something different may happen there commercially or whatnot. Certainly that, if you're, there's concern there, Jake, I'd recommend, in my mind, this is just my personal opinion, I haven't even coordinated with staff, but my personal opinion is like that East Bench and and the City Center Park are priorities right now. We have.
East Bench, you've been dealing with some road issues up there. It would be nice to know what we're doing up there and how it impacts that road. And so.
Is highly used, and it is having some struggles right now.
I try and drive through there on Farmer's Market night, and it's a mess.
Need to create more, utilize the space more intelligently for the events that are very successfully happening there.
Does it save us money on this to take out the Thornton property? Is that something? I mean, it just got brought up. Is that?
Certainly would change the scope.
It's all separated out by Mark.
Quick, this is just one of the, the, one of the more significant grants in the 2024 cycle. Those that were awarded, they had $750,000 level grants, Ogden, Salt Lake, Leighton, Provo. There were several other cities, Midway, Nibley. Nibley's a tiny little town up by Logan. I mean, so there's, there's some big dollars that are available. And then it goes down into smaller grant levels, 200,000, 125, 50, 77, there's a mix. But most of these, when we've seen it, they have detailed site plans and development information that shows exactly what they're doing.
Multi-page spread package.
Yeah, they're almost shovel-ready, almost.
So just as an FYI, that was just one of those that Ron mentioned.
And does this proposal get us close to shovel-ready? What the, what Civil Science would do?
I think what it will do is give you a prioritized list of which projects to pursue. I don't think you can afford all of them in the next two or three years.
Right, but you could start with some.
I think we pick out some that we want to do for this next grant cycle and maybe, yeah, it'd be good enough to get through that. And then we would have to move forward. But a lot of things just are in limbo, you know, because we don't, for example, the park, the baseball field down there got flooded. And now what do we do with it? Do we fix it? Do we not? And it would be nice to know the answer to that.
Do you, do you have any insight? You know, you made the comment, we might not be able to do this in two or three years. If we put this proposal together and three years, we're trying to get money, will it still stand such that it'll compete with?
Okay.
So I think the fair question is, do we think that we are moving forward on Thornton, Linden Hollow, and East Bench in the next five years? If not, we're throwing good money after bad. Not necessarily, because it can tell us some things. It's hard because I have, I I love our Parks and Rec Department. I have full confidence in them. They tell me where to put a playground, and I say, let's put it there. I don't know that these guys from Civil Science can tell me. I I guess they can. They really, I I mean, from the financial piece, right? Because we can't expect Heath to know the, the, the engineering, the, the cost. So I I guess I'm under, I understand that piece.
I'm confident that if we tell them what we want, because I've seen some of their work, they will say, this won't work. This will be a great fit up in that area. You know, that's what they do. And so I'm confident that part will get worked out. And if you don't want to do the Thornton property, I think this. So I'm confident that part will get worked out. And if you don't wanna do the Thornton property, I I think this is a way that's that could get funded with infrastructure money or with recreation money, depending on how you do it.
Yeah.
So I think that's kinda why that that was thrown in here is maybe you can tap into recreation money, even though it's sort of an infrastructure project.
I just haven't thought about the East Bench Park yet. That's that's, I saw that in the staff report earlier this week and I thought, oh. I haven't really thought about. And, you know, pickleball, like, I didn't know that's something we were considering. And I guess this is probably a good first step in doing that, but I don't know that I see that happening in the next five years. And and maybe Heath, you do. And I would, I I put a lot of faith in that recommendation. I just haven't heard that yet.
There's there's a lot of residents that continuously ask me, when are the pickleball courts going in up there? So word has kind of gotten out and they're aware of it and they're really excited about that. We don't, we just don't, we don't have, Hollow Park, I think, is the furthest east pickleball courts we have.
Correct.
And and.
I haven't much looked at the east since I've been here either, Jake. To be honest with you, I've been looking west the whole the whole time. Um, and then as we've had our other neighboring cities develop up there, Bicycle Pass or whatnot. Uh, I've turned my eyes a little bit forward to that, but there is some some activity I'd like to try to stop. In fact, I don't remember how many couches you all picked up that time.
Several loads.
I mean, fifteen to forty couches.
Hmm.
Uh, but that might help it. Um, but we've we've got nothing planned and nothing going up there and money is not free, I get it, but available money if we can convince the government that it's good for us to to get a piece, so.
And you own the land, whether you.
That that's a good piece of the puzzle, is we do own that land. All three of these are city-owned property. I I hope you're not taking my frustrations at the costs of these studies as a uh disincentive to the grant. I I don't know that there's anyone who loves grant money more than me. And and I hope you know that, Ron. I need to buy a lunch sometime because it means a lot that you do what you do and 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 so. Anyways, I I I'm done. I I just appreciate the thought about it. I I just struggle when I see a price tag like that. I hope we're getting seventy thousand dollars worth of information and and hopefully grant opportunities, which which it sounds like we will, so.
I feel like this is gonna pay for itself with the grant money and without it. Well, I look at like Linden could be getting this much money and you're getting this much. And maybe this raises you up here. But because I live here, each year I do these for other cities and I see some of the money they get. I'm like, he was getting that much money.
Are okay with us recognizing that if you were to unbutton your shirt, we would see an S under there. Appreciate your Superman efforts and your mild manner dress as you're here.
Well, I just, you know, I love I I would like to see us take advantage of all the potential we have, I guess what I'm saying.
Are any of the grants for preliminary work? I I guess, I I'm having a I I I'm trying to rack my brain of all the big expenses. We've got a lot of capital expenses coming up in the next five years. Are these po- I and and I think all three of them would be significant millions of dollar investments by the city. Are we are we ready to do that over some of the other things we're trying to do? Um, and the answer, probably maybe. You you know what I mean? So, but are we ready to do that over some of the things we're trying to do at Seven Hundred North, some of the roads?
Certainly, there's some big needs in that way in in stormwater and such. But for me, this starts to put your vision forward. This is what we want. And then we, because we can't do it all at once, we can start doing the things that we think are the most important and step it in, phase it in. Uh, and and I appreciate Noah, your email that you sent regarding the bidding process and how the decisions were made. So thank you in that regard. Uh, so when we get to this, I am in favor of this, by the way, so.
So just as an FYI, so at the end of our our Parks and Trails Master Plan, we included site plans that had been developed for some of our existing parks. And what this has done, so this was one that was done for Hollow Park back in the early two thousands. And then we did another one for Pheasant Brook Park, um, another one for Pioneer Park. And it shows future improvements and then things that may or may not be included in in annual capital facilities plans. Um, but it gives our Parks Department something to then build off of and and work towards. Um, some of these are close to being completed. Others have amenities that are are on here or approved, but we haven't installed them yet. And so having those plans, um, and and these are twenty years old. And so the five-year window may be something that we're updating that that master plan so that we can then update our impact fee facilities or our impact fees and in those studies. Um, but we're not obligated to update these site plans at a five-year interval. So just trying to clear that up.
I appreciate that. That's that's some good color.
Okay.
There are some cities that use these to 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 bring in tournaments for baseball. It's a big economic thing for some cities. Nephi, for example, has plans for a big baseball complex down there. And they can use this to bring businesses and stuff into the area, so.
Nice.
Awesome. Ben, sounds like you're ready to make a motion.
I I am, unless there's any other comments or questions.
The the only comment is if you want the study to be on all three areas, if you're okay with that amount for all three, if we're ready to proceed, or if they're.
I do for all three, yeah. I move to approve awarding Civil Science the Park Planning Service contract in the amount of sixty-nine thousand four hundred as presented. I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Broderick, seconded by Councilmember Jacobs. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Hey, exciting.
Ready to go. It's unanimous.
And Heath.
And Heath.
Yeah.
You don't get to sleep after all, sorry.
After Linden days, he took the day off. And it's like, this isn't how you take the day off.
And and Jake's points are just right on. We look at every dollar we spend. Is it appropriate? Is it right? Does it do the things that we need it to do? Is it a fair spending of taxpayer dollars?
Does it get return on investment? We do have a track record of that, so we'll be hopeful. All right, we are on item number nine now. This is a review and action on some traffic calming recommendations, so um, let's go ahead. We'll have uh staff kind of review this for us and go from there. We do have an who may wish to make some comments.
Yeah, if I could have Trent as our assistant city engineer and and Noah Gordon, our city engineer, if they can come up and um, we received a request from, let me bring this back over here. Received request from a local resident for some uh, traffic calming study to be done on Four Hundred North. And we've provided some information to you. There was a letter that Trent and Noah prepared and it was sent out to the neighborhood along Four Hundred North. And I'll let them detail kind of that process and and how we got to this point. Um, then we received some uh correspondence um from Mr. Washburn that we've provided to you. That was in your staff report as well. Um, and so with that, I'll turn it over to Trent and Noah, so.
Thank you. So, yeah, like Adam said, we received a request from a resident there on Four Hundred North looking for ex- expressing some concerns of speeding traffic on Four Hundred North. Uh, we did a a s- traffic study back in September of last year. We found that the eighty-fifth percentile speed at that location was thirty-three miles per hour, so eight miles an hour over the posted twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. And that the uh average daily traffic was thirty-four of a thirty-four hundred vehicles a day.
How how does that speed study compared to other collectors for us? How has that been? That seems like about what it is on all of them.
Pretty on par for what we see on a variety of of roads throughout Linden. Um, not too long after I did the speeds but study on Four Hundred North, I did another one up on Eight Thirty-five East. The eighty-fifth percentile speed was, again, thirty-three miles per hour. Um, we do have a an adopted citizen, a citizen-initiated traffic calming program. And that gives us a table with different scoring criteria that we use to determine if we should pursue installing traffic calming measures. Um, and so here on Four Hundred North, because of the that speed and the volume of traffic, it does meet that thresh- threshold for considering further uh consideration for implementa- implementation of traffic calming. Whereas there on Eight Thirty-five East, even though that eighty-fifth percentile speed was the same, the volume is significantly less and it did not meet that threshold, just the way that 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 scoring works. Um, there's additional scoring that we take into account that determines the prioritization of different traffic calming projects. And the way that, and some of that criteria, again, we look at the speed and the volume. We look at if there's elementary schools present on the corridor. That doesn't apply here. Um, we look at the presence of pedestrian generators such as parks or community centers. Um, if this is considered a pedestrian or bicycle route and if there is or is not the um, is the existence of sidewalk on one or both sides. So when we evaluated all that, it does, it is considered, it kind of just barely crosses that threshold for being considered a high priority project for traffic calming. Um, so we at Public Works looked at different options. Some citizens expressed a desire for a median. They like the idea of being able to have traffic, not just driving a straight line, but go around. Um, basically change their course and they feel that would slow vehicles down more, which I can understand. Um, on the Public Works side, our, I know our slow snowplow drivers are not excited about having a very restricted width. And they're more in favor of of chokers. Um, in the the letter that I sent out to residents, I included a picture from a fairly recent uh Daily Herald article that Lehigh City was implementing temporary traffic calming. And they were doing it more on a experimental basis, doing studies to see how effective um some of these traffic calming measures would be. Here's the picture that Adam's showing down there at the bottom of um what Lehigh is proposing to do. And we thought we could do something similar for a variety of of reasons. You can see in that top picture kind of a a potential layout for how those um plastic deline- delineators could be placed. Um, may we anticipate this would give us the effect of permanent chokers, which we have chokers in a variety of locations. We have a couple sets on Center Street. Orem maintains a couple over on Two Hundred South. We have some on Eight Hundred West.
And how have those worked? How, do you have any studies that, like our one on Eight Hundred West and Center Street? Have we done any traffic studies to see how effective they've been on the projects we've done?
They've been in place for a good long while. And I know back when J U B was the city engineer, um, they, I think they did do some studies. And I I I'm unprepared with the the results of that, so I apologize.
Yeah, the concern with those being in there so long, we can't do a, here's what it looked like before they were in, because now they're in, so.
Exactly.
But you would know, what is the traffic doing today? What is the average speed on Eight Hundred West? Maybe we don't know what it was before, but if it's still thirty-three miles per hour.
We have done some studies on Eight Hundred West.
Yeah, we have done a few, not right in the location where the the chokers are. I I if I remember, I up at the north end, we did a study, I wanna say it was twenty-nine miles per hour, which is actually on the lower end of speed studies I do. We did another one on the south end.
We do have on center, right by the temple at the chokers there, we have a before study that we could look at and and do that after. And the thought was, we weren't gonna do the after until the temple opened to see what that volume is, but um.
And and I realize these plastic delineators is a temporary thing to determine if it is working, so I'm assuming that a traffic study is planned after they go in to see what it does.
Yeah, exactly. That's one purpose for proposing a temporary installation. Yeah, we would not wanna invest all the money of of hard concrete and then find out these aren't effective, right?
Sorry, it just doesn't look great. Looking like at Two Hundred South, there, as it crosses the Murdock Canal, it it has some narrowing. Can you not do a before, close to, and after? To just see how much impact that has? I would assume that up the hill would be just as fast down the hill if that didn't have some calming.
You're saying, you gotta do the study like in an area that doesn't have the chokers and then versus right at the chokers?
Right.
Sounds more.
Yeah. Anecdotally, you know, if, as you drive down that road, a speed on a road typically, this eighty-fifth percentile from an engineering perspective, it's all due to driver perception. So if the road is wide and straight, I mean, we all kind of feel this.
Sure.
We just kind of tend to go faster versus if it has this choke-down effect, it feels more constrained. Even if the road itself is on, even if it's only done with paint sometimes, it just feels narrower. So you have probably all experienced that on Eight Hundred West by Pheasant Brook Park where those chokers are. It it feels really kind of like, I don't wanna go through there as quickly, even though the lane itself is the exact same width. It just, there's no shoulder. But it just, from a driver perception, it feels less, you know, like happy to drive on. So you're gonna essentially slow down as you go through those choke points.
The experiments are great. I'm I'm a little surprised there's not some well-established statistical data that's already available, because I would think we're not the first and and there's stuff out there, but.
Yeah, and and it's gonna depend on a lot of different characteristics of the road. I mean, these will have a different effect on different types of roads, so.
So it's sim- it's similar to Lehigh, Provo City as well uh has implemented a lot of these flexible delineators in areas as a low cost, not only from a study standpoint, but as a permanent solution in multiple areas where they've had accidents or they're trying to do some traffic calming near grade schools, near other areas where they just used to have maybe a painted area and then they put up these delineators. So, but they're also studying those effects. And so we could reach out to Lehigh has done this for a little bit now. They're kind of in an experimental stage as well, or Provo. They're finding these to be pretty effective for a very low-cost option.
Something to keep in mind, I know we received comments of of concern about the visual aspects of of the delineators, the vertical plastic columns there. Um, but even if we put in a a curbed choke choker like what you see here, we're still gonna need to put the delineators on it.
Yes, they look much better when they're on a curb rather than just.
Just wanted to make sure. Just because it's a curb doesn't mean there's no delineators. Delineators would be there in either option.
Yeah, and I and I understand that. But I think for me, it's, I want to know the effectiveness of these types of things. And I think there's probably enough of projects like this that are out there. We should be able to find some data. Uh, e- even if it's, like I said, let's run the our own, 'cause we have our own counter, don't we, and our own speed thing? So we could do it at a pretty low cost on Eight Hundred West and let's see what we're currently doing.
Another.
And I thought we did that with uh Big D's. Mr. Anton had requested that. He had concerns on speeding and I know we do. So, yeah, I guess data is something that I'm hoping for.
Another option I think could be worthy of exploration is an example. So, you know, I had a lot of residents worried about Locust and Four Hundred. And there were a few accidents there as well. And uh it ended up having meeting warrants to put a stop sign. And I know there was some some testing done there prior to what was happening, you know, traffic count, spe- average speed. Um, and now the residents around there, my observation, 'cause I drive there every day to to leave my home, people are coming down that portion of the hill. They have to slow down in anticipation of the stop sign. Full stop. Now they have to accelerate again and they're somewhat slow to get up to, you know, until they get to the signal. So the residents there have been really happy with the stop sign at that intersection because it's just people can't cruise for a super long period of time and gain speed with that, you know, the the hill. Um, and stop signs are super cheap compared to any of all this. So, um, it was mentioned um, by Mr. Washburn that, this is before my time. I moved into Linden in nineteen ninety-three. And so I don't remember this, but you said there's some old timers that recall. They said there were stop signs at the intersection of Canal. Um, interesting thought, you know, if we broke up the the block and the the big hill with a, just a simple stop sign. And that's something maybe that engineers could study as well. If it meets warrants, we can't just you know, put stop signs wherever we want. We have to meet warrants and things like that.
I actually have, I printed out a couple of pages from the the NUTCD, which is kind of the national engineering standard for um, road signage and and striping and whatnot. I highlighted this thing. It says, yield or stop signs shall not be used. I highlighted this thing, it says, yield or stop signs shall not be used for speed control. So we can't just put up a stop sign to try and slow traffic down. That's a national standard. And I can understand it. I remember driving through a small town near where I lived and it, I, it had the perception of they had a long road that it seemed like every intersection had a four-way stop. And I was like, there's no way this met warrants and I was getting incredibly frustrated. And I think your tendency when that happens is to just get to the next intersection as fast as possible to make up for lost time. That's.
How do, sorry.
No, go ahead. I think that's part of the reason why we don't.
The signs, I'm seeing a lot more signs that show your speed. In fact, I saw one yesterday that starts bringing red and blue, right?
Yeah.
How do those compare to these um, throttling?
Yeah, Mr. Washburn actually asked about that as well. So we just installed some on four hundred east, um, in at least two locations. Um, I, when we get these new signs, they come with a free year of cloud connectivity. So I actually have it pulled up right now and it gives me a, I haven't figured out how it batches it, but it pulls up like the last handful of cars, like twenty-six, fifteen, twenty-seven cars. Um, currently on the north end, where we did a study back in twenty twenty-four, or no, excuse me, twenty twenty, the eighty-fifth percentile speed there was thirty-four miles per hour.
And what road are we talking about, sorry?
Uh, four hundred east, north of four hundred north. Um, in April, when we first put up these radar signs, that was down to thirty-two miles per hour. And then I looked at it again, just for today, and it was thirty-two to thirty-three miles per hour. Right at this moment, the eighty-fifth percentile at those locations is thirty-three and thirty-four miles per hour, so.
Was before, right?
Yeah, so what we have heard from other cities that have implemented these, these radar signs with the, the speeds on them, uh, specifically Orem, because we had asked about that down on two hundred. We have found is it has a short-term effect and then essentially don't think that you're going to see long-term speed reductions with these. Um, you pretty much, he says, from at least seen really any change whatsoever, but we've, we've spent some money on.
Interesting comment there, because, because we personalize everything as you speed. As me, if I just had lost track, it causes me to slow down.
It, on Sand Hill Road near Walmart in Orem, I will find myself doing three miles times.
And again, that eighty-five percentile, that fifteen percent, the dangerous, more dangerous side.
Trent, you mentioned could be warranted.
Yeah, great question.
Just to break up the.
Stop signs. So the different criteria that the NUTCD gives us is crash experience, uh, site distance. If there's, we, you, you can't see down, far enough down the road to safely make a turn. Um, if you're making, if you're looking at having a temporary four-way stop as you're getting ready to transition to a signal or a roundabout. And then uh, volumes for eight hours in a day, you look at the volumes both on the major leg and on the minor leg. And then it does say other factors like the need to control left turn conflicts or an intersection of two residential neighborhood collector streets of similar design and operating charis- chari- characteristics where all ways stop control would improve traffic operational operate characteristics of the intersection or where pedestrian and bicycl- bicyclist movements support the installation of that. That's what the U T C D gives us.
You, you had made a comment earlier that said this is barely meeting some warrants. Is this something that we anticipate getting worse?
So it's not a, when he said that, it was not a comment about warrants for the stop sign. It was actually that citizen-initiated traffic calming program. In other words, somebody's asking us to look at it. And when we went through the criteria, some of these were kind of iffy and we were more conservative. Otherwise, the score actually would have not made it past that. There's an eighty-point threshold. Uh, we're up at eighty.
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. We looked at it just the other day again to kind of re-look at it. For example, one of them is traffic, pedestrian traffic generators. In other words, people, where people are going to be walking to. Typically it's schools or civic centers. In this case, we chose to include the church, thinking it's not necessarily on the list explicitly, but it kind of makes sense. There really aren't a lot of pedestrian traffic generators or things that people are going to walk to. But there's not, there are some stretches here that just flat out don't have sidewalks. So where are people going to walk? They're going to be out in the road, therefore we kind of added that to the score to, to say, yeah, that makes sense. If it had, you know, sidewalk or a trail on both sides, chances are people aren't going to be out in the road. But in this case.
That church is used for.
We understand it's a Y S A.
It's a Y S A church.
I don't know how many of those people are walking. Most of the Y S A is my personal family, half the driver.
Yes, having served there for four years, I know of one person that walked.
Um, it's even not even necessarily the people who attend at the church who would use it there. I actually just recently did a, put up the traffic camera to look at volumes going in and out of that driveway to the church and observed a lot of people who were just going out for a walk and they would go and walk around in the church parking lot, so.
Not even walking to the church, just walking around.
Yep.
Maybe what you've got, you've, it's kind of that segue, you did some traffic counts with the camera, counting how many cars are going in and out of that driveway.
Yeah, and as you can imagine on a Sunday, it's much more significant than during the rest of the week. Um, and without diving into the numbers, I do have the numbers here, but it, it, they wanted us to look into the possibility of putting up a, an all-way stop at this driveway. And we're not even close to meeting warrants there, mostly because of the volume going in and out of that driveway.
I think you commented on the non-Sunday, it was like eleven trips during a.
Between seven AM and seven PM, I, I saw eleven vehicles leaving that driveway. Um, it does get a little bit more after seven PM. I, I'm assuming Y S A have activities Monday nights right, right, right about seven.
And we should also point out, school's not in, so we get it that that may influence these numbers.
Um, the residents also want us to evaluate, um, looking at pedestrian crosswalks in this area. And so as school gets started, we, we plan on doing a study to figure out where are, where are people crossing the road? Are, how many students do we have crossing the road? Where are they crossing? Where would it make sense to put in a crosswalk? So that's something that we plan to look into.
This, uh, this criteria test, is that something that we've developed in Linden? Or is that something that's international or national?
For the cit- for the traffic calming thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, so my, that precedes the two of us here. My understanding is that was something that the city of Linden developed for Linden, the previous engineering firm that worked with Linden. I do not know where that came from, whether that was something specific only to Linden. My guess is they took some other study from somewhere else and then worked with Linden and tweaked it. But I don't know exact, I don't know, Adam, if you remember when that first was developed, how that was developed. That's been a number of years.
It predated me, so it was before twenty, two thousand five. So J U B had, J U B was our city engineers at the time and they had developed that. Um, and, and from time to time, we've had a, app, applications from residents. And so, um, it's current, is it still available on the website under the Public Works?
And if you go to Streets.
And then Streets, there's a link for the citizen-initiated traffic calming program right there. And so there's this manual that's been adopted by the city council and revised most recently in twenty twenty-two. And it goes through the process for the various options of traffic calming, so.
If you want to show them, this is an example of how not to do a flow chart in here. I mean, good luck following that. I don't know, yeah, that's really, don't.
Trent, you, you made a comment that the snowplow drivers uh, prefer not to go with the chicane. Is that how you say that? Chicane option, that middle median. I'm super naive when it comes, I understand how speed bumps, that would be very, because you'd have to lift and start over. But if the road remains passable, how is that different from needing to curve around any other of our curvy road? You know, I'm just thinking, if you're just curving, how is that more disruptive than curving? Like if you keep just going up that road, there's a curve and there's just multiple roads like that I drive on. There's a curve that would be less severe than this. So I just guess I don't understand how this would be very disruptive.
There's chicanes, which are essentially, so if you go back to the figure, I don't know, Adam, that has, you know, a bowl bow. Or essentially you have like a choker where it narrows it on both sides, they're parallel to each other. A chicane essentially is the same thing, only they're offset. So you're essentially having to weave back and forth.
Mm-hmm.
That, our plow drivers don't have as much of a problem with. Once again, we'd have to have delineators.
Yeah.
They do not like the idea of a median.
Okay.
So if you were, for example, to put something in the middle of the road where people have to kind of revert to around it, that causes problems with the blade hitting it.
Gotcha.
The blade potentially hits any of these.
Sure.
But that, yeah, so that on the kind of top picture is an example of a chicane where you can kind of see it essentially narrows it all to one side. Which actually, we are looking at doing something like that up at the Murdoch.
Yeah, in the letter to residents, I indicated that we do want to put in perfect choker, or not perfect. Hopefully the perfect, permanent chokers up at the Murdoch Trail. We have them at the trail crossing on Center Street and two hundred south. And yet at four hundred north, we have a fence that's, that predated the trail that just restricts your view. And you don't see a cyclist or a trail user until they're almost in the road. And putting up chokers would, would help with that. However, there is current, current residents that use access right there on the south, right next to the, the trail. So we thought maybe a chicane actually might preserve his access, but still give us that safety aspect.
Kind of pushes the people away from that fence on the north side. Essentially, it's kind of like a double width choker to kind of narrow the asphalt down, but pushes them away so people can see if there's trail users from that fence. That fence really is kind of a.
Yeah, problem.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It sounds like there's some hesitancy, probably not ready to make a decision tonight. What, what additional information would be helpful? So the before and after speed?
Yes, especially on eight hundred west. I mean, what is, what is that happening down there now? Has it made a difference? Or at least we maybe don't know what the bench line was before, but to know what it is now. And again, we can do that essentially.
And we may have a benchmark. It's just going to be fifteen, twenty years old probably, so, but yeah, we can.
I get, there's a hesitancy to do anything permanent, which is why we were proposing doing something of a quite temporary nature if need be. I mean, this, this could be a permanent solution, but we're anticipating it, doing it. These are really inexpensive and then we can get an idea, both a pre and a post, with something that's actually there in, in this particular location. So that's, just to make sure we're understanding.
Sure, I get that.
This one's a temporary kind of, let's do it.
I'm trying to feel how pressing the need to, to, to do anything is.
Well, if I may, I'd like to interject. Mr. Washburn has invested significant research time into this and communication. I'd like to give him an opportunity to come forward and maybe is, address the council about what's been discussed thus far.
You're glad to. I appreciate the work that these two gentlemen have done. Uh, they have been educated in their science and that's weighty in my mind. The problem is aesthetically, we haven't talked about the impact at all. We have not talked about a number of the issues that we raised in the communication after we gathered together as a neighborhood. Thank you. Uh, for example, if, if there once was an all-stop at Six East and Locust, an all-stop, not just a two-way stop, that location long ago met the warrants for an all-stop intersection. Traffic has not decreased on four hundred north since that date. So I did not hear you offer to evaluate whether that location meets warrants based on the increase in traffic.
Excuse me, Mr. Washburn.
You just batted it away and said that that's not acceptable in your view. I'd like to see that work done. I'd like to see the data to see whether that location, based on increased traffic over decades, justifies based on warrants.
Mr. Washburn, just a point of clarification, I think you said four hundred and Locust, did you intend four hundred and Canal?
Four hundred and Canal, I'm sorry.
Yes, just wanted to make sure.
Locust is down the hill. Thank you for that clarification. I think we're avoiding some things that we prefer not to do. But the neighbors, if, if the neighbors were here tonight, you, you'd see very distressed looks on their faces based on what you've proposed so far. I tried to avoid that conflict by doing the organizational work that I've done thus far so that you could see the engineer's point of view. You could see the neighborhood preferences and opinions and put those up against each other and see what makes sense. If, for example, the plastic delineators are part of the equation, the fifteen homeowners all on the impacted area are going to be very opposed to that because of the aesthetic damage. Not to say anything about the limited uh, access in and out of their driveways. And if you real, if you put up your illustration, Adam, do you have that of the proposed location of the delineators right next to four seventy?
Next to four, sorry.
Four seventy east.
This?
There we go, top picture. Can you zoom in on that? Have you considered what that would do to driveway access in that location?
Well, there are any driveways right in that vicinity. It would eliminate some on-street parking. There's.
True.
Way around that.
But I think you're compromising left-hand turn movements in and out of driveways, the way you've modeled that. We need to have some further discussion on those kind of subjective issues that are important to the homeowner because of impact on value on their home investment. We haven't discussed that at all yet. Those are important elements. I'm distressed with the push aside of the chicane center island issue. If they are done elsewhere, they could happen here if we had a mind to do it, right?
They could, yeah.
One of your concerns had been the reduction of on-street parking, I believe, in your letter. Regardless of any of these passive traffic calming things, if we narrowed the width, that will affect on-street parking, whether it's shown over the side of the chicane or whether it is a median.
Let's have a discussion on that for just a minute. Let's assume the chicane island in the middle is six feet wide. From white line edge of, uh, how shall I describe it? The white line on the right-hand side of the road to curb. Right now, there's fifteen feet on both sides of the road, not being used, okay? How wide does a parking stall need to be on curb side?
It could be about nine feet.
Okay, I, I'll accept that. So if we take three feet away from each side of the road to create a, a six-foot island in the middle, that leaves how many feet on both sides from fifteen? Twelve. Twelve is remaining. What is the standard width of a parking stall? Nine? I see three feet left for a bike lane. Granted, you may not be able to have a parking stall there, but you know what? We've pulled ourselves on that and we're willing to make that sacrifice to make it happen. The, the property owners in this location prefer that over what you're proposing.
So I guess I'm confused. What is the action item in front of the council tonight? Is it to yea or nay on the temporary thing to study this? Or is it to come up with a permanent solution that meets both the city and the neighbors? We, we would just probably like some direction as far as what, what direction does the council want us to take away from this?
In the staff report, it talks about it being temporary. Up in the review and action, that could be interpreted to maybe be uh, permanent as well. So that would be something I was concerned about.
Temporary things morph into being permanent. We don't want to get caught in that trap.
Yeah, wording would have to be adjusted in that proposal.
There would have to be a specific end date for anything temporary.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Washburn.
You're welcome.
I appreciate you. All right, council, um.
Adam, should I have?
Yeah. If you're not prepared to make a decision.
My thing would be to make a, a motion to continue this, but I want information to know, has, if, if the chokers aren't effective, th- then we're probably not doing anything. So I'm looking for reasonings why we would do something and if what's being proposed, if there's enough information to say. If there's enough information to say, hey, we want to at least test it in a temporary basis on this stretch. And then a decision would be made. So I think there's a three-step process here in my mind that would still want to go before anything permanent occurred. Before we start looking at property values, how it impacts each driveway and ev- all of the homeowners. So I I think we're a couple of steps away from that in my mind.
Mr. Washburn, in your letter, if my impression was you would be satisfied with the consideration, if it warrants, to to do a four-way stop at that location. And then versus
Was that a canal?
A canal. Yeah, that was my impression. I, you know, again, can't make any promises here, but it could be explored. Um, there's addition, there's a lot more expense involved with chicanes and islands and very, very expensive propositions.
Well, as with the uh electronic flashing signs that we've talked about, from what's been discussed on that tool or device, it seems to me that they don't have much effect. And so it would seem like we've had a good discussion to take that off the the option list, because they're not effective. I'd like to see us go through that same process of elimination on the other possible directions. We did not expect the council to make a final decision tonight. We expected that this would be a beginning of a collaborative discussion. Where your concerns, our concerns, hopefully can be blended. And we can come up with a mitigation plan that everybody can support.
The the work that you've done with your neighbors is impressive and incredibly helpful. So thank you for that.
Well, the 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 effort was done with the intent of trying to make this meeting here tonight as productive as possible and maybe save two or three back and forth. So hopefully, it will have that beneficial effect.
Well, very good. I think Councilmember Broderick had entertained a motion to continue if
Well, hang on, there's another comment.
One more comment. Yes, please come forward and state your name for the, state your name for the record. Thank you.
Joan Washburn. So I invite all of the council to go, you can start on Center Street if you want, and come down Canal. And come to that area that we're talking about for a four-way stop. And as soon as you get to Fourth North and Canal, I want you to look to the right and see if that isn't an obstruction to your view that warrants a stop sign, a four-way stop that used to be there. And the other element that I want to bring to your attention is anyone coming from the north, and I think this was in your letter, anyone coming from the north, once that temple is open. I don't know about you, but I find little side streets all the time. They will not go all the way down to Center Street and do the roundabout. As lovely as that area is, coming from the north, they will go on Fourth North and then come down Canal. That will be a very busy street that warrants further study because once that temple is open, you can bet that that will either double or triple traffic. That's all I have to say. But try try going on Canal. And then when you get to Fourth North, see if you can look up. And if that isn't a safety concern, because it is. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So you're citing that in?
Now.
Oh.
So on four hundred North and Canal.
There's a little retaining wall.
Turning east.
Yeah.
Yeah. To go up the mountain.
Yeah, if you're, if you come down Canal and come up to four hundred North and then look right on four hundred North, Canal and four hundred North. That is a, that is so hard because you're coming, they're coming down off the hill, so it's an elevation change. Plus, it's, you just cannot see.
You're talking going south on Canal or?
Going north on Canal.
Looking to the right.
To go east.
Looking east.
The property there has landscaping and a retaining wall and then this fourth, like she's mentioning. All right, thank you.
To that point being raised, there is potential additional traffic once the temple is open. What would you like us to do with that? Do you want us to postpone and we push this off until? I mean, we were talking about needing to push things off until schools open for some issues, right? For both traffic as well as pedestrian. Do we need to push things off until the temple is open and functioning normally?
I think that would be wise. I mean, we've got a lot of factors here and I would like to see that, yeah, rather than keep going back and forth.
Otherwise, I fear we come back with something and then conditions change and then we come back again.
And I appreciate the invitation to like go on the road and all, because that's what I was gonna say when Adam was asking, what do you need? I need, I can't look at that and get a visual of what I'm really seeing. So I'd like a field trip or the opportunity to go down there.
I drive it every day. My house is that brown one right here.
So it may actually be, the temple's kind of an anomaly. It may be beneficial to do a speed study. We did one before, and now the chokers have gone in without the temple being open, just to see what that difference is, just to see if if the chokers are effective.
Saying for a permanent decision.
Right.
You may need to do it before you actually implement anything. Uh, or do you want to implement some interim measure? I'm just trying to get directions as far as what you, you as a council think you want to do.
Just study right now.
Yeah.
Well, and the the question about the four-way, would that be part of that study? It's like if the four-way should be on six hundred east and Canal, I mean, yeah, six hundred east and Canal.
Is that where we were reinstating a four-way, where it used to be a four-way, now it's a two-way? That's this intersection we were talking about.
Used to be, used to be is a really loose term, because thirty or forty years ago, I, yeah. Is that what you think it was there that long ago? I've worked here for twenty years and it is not there. Twenty years ago. And she thinks there was a four-way stop there. Okay, well, at some point, the road didn't go past Murdoch Canal, and so it it ended there.
Right.
And and so there, yeah, anyway, there wasn't very much traffic there. That's what surprises me that that was a four-way intersection.
Need to ask Lou Henrichs.
So I am planning to do a study there. I'm gonna wait until after school starts, because I think people might see more traffic.
It happened chronologically after the developments upon the East.
The the east, east side people shut the four-way down, so.
About three old timers verify that.
Okay. Thank you.
I like the stop sign.
Let's keep the meeting moving, council. Let's entertain a motion on this so we can move on to our next item. Thank you.
I make a motion to appro- to uh continue item number seven to discussing the calming measures on four hundred North.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Broderick, seconded by Councilmember Hoyt. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Hopefully, that gives us some good Thank you, gentlemen.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
By Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Broderick to open a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll turn this back over to Mr. Florence regarding a general plan, future land use map amendment.
All right, thank you.
And this is a, is this ti- this is tied to the same, to item eleven?
Makes two items.
So this, just make a note.
So I'll just make one presentation, but again, like you said, there'll be two items um that are that are related here, so. Sorry, let me get set up. All right, so Mr. Alexander owns Alexander's Print Advantage here in Linden uh over west of Geneva Road, not too far from this property that we're looking at here. It's highlighted in blue. Um, it's located on three seventy-seven South, eight hundred West. The, so the two petitions before you is to amend the general plan, land use map. And their proposal is to change it from flex office to flex commercial. And then to amend the zoning from research and business to regional commercial zone. I'm gonna go through some of the details on that. This development, the Canopy Business Park, was subdivided in about two thousand and five. Uh, work started around that time as well on this business park. It's a very attractive business park. There's there's uh three areas that are not yet developed. You've got uh this area here behind the Kia dealership, the corner that uh we're looking at tonight. And then the three parcels to the north of that, um, those properties. If you remember in two thousand and twenty-one, uh where the Kia dealership is and then this parcel east of the Kia Kia dealership, we we rezoned those to regional commercial. And then the next day, the Kia dealership came in and said, I want to buy the corner property. Um, and so we rezoned the property back to commercial, planned commercial one for the Kia dealership, but left this east parcel um as regional commercial. So, um, Mr. Alexander's looking to add an office warehouse unit or building uh to this corner parcel. The um, his plans are to stay here in Linden, but he just needs to expand. Go to the, a couple of other items in the staff report. So the regional commercial zone and that re- uh and that flex office, general plan designation, you'll find that on the on the west side of Linden in in this business park that Mark Weldon has constructed there off the PG interchange and where the DoTERRA facility is. So that's where our other regional commercial zone is located. The region, the the research and business zone, it 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 was, it's been set up as kind of a technology and research and business park. Uh, many of the businesses in there are office-type uses, are call centers. Um, there is one building here that where, um, I can't remember, there on the corner of four hundred West and two hundred South. They do have a number of warehouse-type uses in there and a call center. There's four or five warehouse uses in there, fulfillment centers. Um, and so that's the only property in that research and business zone that is kind of different. Um, that's not just strictly kind of an office-type use. Let's see. Our, you know, as city staff is concerned, our our main concern is that whatever goes into this property that fit in with the remaining Canopy Business Park. Uh, you also, I I put in your report that there was another developer looking at these back three parcels for uh to rezone, uh rezone to regional commercial. Uh, they have submitted their application last Friday, so they're going to planning commission next week as a consideration as well. So, you you know, the the these properties have become popular and and developers want to try and 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 change the zoning on that to do something uh unique. I'll let Mr. Alexander talk more about his vision for this property. He's looking at about a fifty to sixty thousand square foot building on this highlighted parcel. The the general commercial zone does have design standards. I, if you, if you've seen those buildings out to the west there, that that's what, kind of what you'd see. So they require some uh breakup of the facade every fifty feet. They do require sixty percent of the front facade to be glass. Uh, they do require some canopies over the entrances and windows, uh some facade, or some roof variation as well. Um, it does allow for concrete tilt-up buildings. Uh, so that'll kind of give you an idea of of some of those design standards. If you look at the difference just between our our two, um, the flex office, you know, so if you're, that's what the Canopy Business Park currently is designated in the general plan. Talks about how it supports a range of commercial technol- technology and professional offices. Office uses within a unified and attractive business park, uh close to that sixteen hundred North interchange. A well-planned campus-like office setting. That flex commercial, it does allow some additional uses. You you'll have more warehouse-type uses. The um, the property that to the north, it's also got an application, and they're looking at four buildings and a number of con- uh forty or fifty condominium units in that for small businesses. Um, but but again, you're looking at properties close to the freeway. You know, clear and consistent urban design, street scape, architectural and site design standards should be established um for these areas, which they are in the zoning ordinance. So, uh, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Uh, Mr. Alexander, um, and his sons are here as well, that would be glad to answer anything about and their vision for the property.
Please come forward. Welcome.
While they're coming up, thank you, Mike. I love it when you put the the description of the different zones and what from to the change. That s- saves me so much time and helps me really look at it closely. So thank you. Very appreciated.
Hi.
Hello.
Uh, Jeff Alexander, this is my son Nick. And Charlie had to leave. He had another appointment he needed to get to. But Charlie is the president of the company now, and Nick is our CFO. And we, we're wanting to do this because we've just run out of room at our location. We need, we need more warehouse space and and a little bit more office space as well. And this gives us an opportunity to have a facility still here in Linden without looking to move the whole operation someplace else. Uh, so, and if you, I don't know if you know where we are and and what we do, but we have tried ever since we've been there to keep up our property and uh make sure that the landscaping is well taken care of, uh as well as the building. And we'd be very much aware of that in this location as well. It it will be a combination office warehouse. Uh, it will be storage for us. Uh, and may, we, it may be a little bit of space for us to rent. Uh, but mostly, we'll be using the property. Um, so there will be some deliveries made there, but it won't be extensive. Uh, we'll have a small box truck that we use that we take. Um, right now, another warehouse here in Linden that we're renting, that we pick up uh material that we need at our facility from time to time. Any questions at all?
I'm on your website. Very impressive. Love how long you've been in Linden. Love your business. I I know exactly where you're at and have been there from time to time. And uh, I, this is a win. This is what we absolutely want to see when Linden businesses decide, hey, we want to stay here. We want to grow here. Um, this is exciting. So, um, just appreciate that and glad we can maybe accommodate you on this zoning. I I I do have one question. It's it's for staff, not necessarily for you all. Um, with this public notice, or uh public hearing, the neighbors were noticed within a certain area, right? I I were, I know Canopy's made a significant investment here. And I don't think, I, you know, in in my opinion, it it's to, you know, they they would want to see this happen. But I want to make sure they had their opportunity to to see it, hear it, and uh speak up if they wanted to.
Yeah, I I keep, I screenshot a map on that to everybody that we send notices to.
Okay.
One of the things I think is always helpful, Mr. Alexander and Alexander, is it, do you have any sketches or thoughts on the elevation of what this building might look like? Because some could look at this as a down zone, a downgrade in the zoning, because we have higher commercial standards as it's currently zoned. And so that's always helpful to know what the intent is and what that visually could potentially look like, so it fits in with the the area.
So for context, the, from the roundabout, the first building on your right on that vacant lot, we're actually renting that space.
It's the small warehouse.
On the north of the old Vivint complex. Um, yeah, I mean, for sure, our height is gonna be between twenty-five and thirty feet. Very similar to that building. Definitely numerous more character and
So two-story.
Way better landscape. Yeah.
This won't be within the Canopy group. You guys are purchasing it, building it yourselves.
The Canopy group.
You're purchasing it from them. It's not part of, it's not gonna be a Canopy property that you're leasing from.
Sure.
I think the thought we've had has been a tilt-up concrete building. Because we feel that we can, it's, our building now is is uh brick, it's mason brick. And but we don't think that uh we would need to go to that expense in a warehouse like this. But we also believe that the concrete tilt-up will give us a lot of flexibility in giving the building more personality. Especially more than where we are now renting that warehouse, because that is just a metal.
Yeah, it's just a metal box. Yeah, I would, I mean, I would imagine multiple colors.
Do you anticipate this having any customer facing or interaction?
Yeah, I I think we are gonna have to build it with that intent.
I, because I, my concern is, if it's like, this is warehouse, then you're gonna want to do the cheapest thing possible, potentially. Yeah.
So, just like we did on our original building, that that was built if if for some reason we wanted to move out and go someplace else. It was built with the intention to be able to subdivide it into multiple office warehouse units. Um, we would see the same thing with this, so that you'd have the, and and like Mike was saying, in that area, we have to have saying, in that area, we have to have the frontage broken up with different entrances all the way across. So it would not just be a plain old warehouse.
Yeah.
It would look more like an office from the front side of it, which I would think would be the eight hundred West, but we're not sure yet. We haven't done any renderings because we didn't know if we wanted to go to the expense where we knew we could do anything.
Right.
And so we just hadn't gone that far with it yet. But as with our original building, our intent would be to get something that would be more timeless, so that you wouldn't be able to peg, that's when that was built. And we, and ours so far is almost thirty years old and we don't feel that it has that look to it at this point.
Yeah, and, I mean, like he said, there will be all the landscaping rules in place and however many trees per feet and there's going to be plenty, I mean, a lot of green space.
How does it work?
In fact, on our building, we just went through this summer, we felt that the landscaping was getting overgrown, have taken a lot out and started to kind of re.
Refreshing it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's important to us.
Very nice.
How does it work? They've applied to change the zoning on a property that's not theirs yet. They get that approved because the landowner's been noticed, we're fine to do that.
And we, we require an owner's consent to be notarized. And so Willie Blocker is the representative for the Canopy Business Park. He's signed a notarized owner's consent form.
That, that's not post this, that's already occurred?
Yes. Now, if they walk away, he, you know, he could sell it to someone else for a regional commercial zone.
Right. But they have it under contract and that, that makes sense. I was trying to wrap my head around that, makes a lot of sense.
In fact, Willie was at the last with the planning commission, was at that meeting to speak in our favor.
Well, planning commission's one I always like to bring up. How did things go there? I know it was a unanimous decision.
Yeah, they, they had the same feelings, that they were happy to see a, a local business staying here in Linden and expanding in Linden.
Great.
So by opening, changing the zoning, I know the Alexanders here have this beautiful design that they're planning to do, but we changed the zoning and for whatever reason they changed their mind and they go away, we've now zoned it and the next person can say, tilt-up well, warehouse, no character. How do we, how do we manage that risk?
Why don't you tell them again, Mike, about what the requirements are in that area?
Yeah, I mean, you, the regional commercial zone does have its own design standards, but, but you would get, you know, the, the buildings, like the Weldons have constructed, and I can, I can go to some of those. But it does require sixty percent glass along the bottom, facing the street. It does require some articulation in the building, even if it is a, um, a, a tilt-up building, yeah.
Warehouse or tilt-up?
Yeah. I'm trying to, sorry, I'm on here.
High standard.
Not the industrial zone.
Research, and the research zone is, to me, is extremely unique. Like it's very narrow. I think, I think the place for even renting is technically research and development, but I would say all the tenant, none of the tenants are doing research and development.
It's pretty messy there.
It's about a bunch of like e-commerce, resellers and stuff like that.
So that's one of the buildings. Here's some other buildings.
It's unfortunate, it's winter time with no leaves or anything.
All right, counsel, any further questions on this?
I have two.
Two. Have you ever done any printing for the city?
No, I'd have to look and see.
Pretty much.
Well, the interesting thing about our business now, we made a switch, started making a switch about eight years ago to where now all of our customers are online. So we're even, like a chapbooks, for instance, a, a photo book.
We're pretty much a wholesaler.
Yeah, we've become wholesaler and a fulfillment house. So instead of doing corporate print, and this really helped us during COVID when nobody was doing anything, our customers, we find they're from all over the country and the world, they want to do print here in the United States and have it delivered. And so we're more of an automated printer now, where they work batches nightly with us from all these customers and then we print and then ship to their customers.
Oh, very cool.
So it's, it's an interesting.
Direct to consumers much.
Probably wouldn't see that.
Yeah, we don't, so we don't have local corporate customers anymore.
Yes, we don't print, I guess, directly for consumers, but we're B to B to C. So we contract with them, manufacture for them, and then ship directly to their customers. So no one knows we exist.
Bad place to be.
Yeah.
It just shows up with.
It's a little different. The, the, the technology has really allowed us to change what we do.
Well, I'm looking at your history from when you started to, as a copy shop till now. We love to do business with those who are in our city and, and, and I bring that up. We also have opportunities for awesome businesses like you to get involved in chamber of commerce type stuff, Linden Days, that was just done. So anyways, I bring that up for future discussion down the road because we love, we love our Linden businesses. So if there's no other comments, I'll make a motion to close the.
Oh, yeah.
No, go ahead, Cole.
No, you can close it, mine's after, can be after.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by councilmember Hoyt, seconded by councilmember Broderick to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, back to you, counsel.
Now, we can discuss.
Yeah, that's right.
I'll just reiterate what everybody said. I have great confidence that Alexanders have been here for a long time, will, will continue the great tradition that they have. Your building's beautiful and if it's been here twenty-six years and looks like that, you've, you've done a great job to maintain and, and would look forward to what you would do with that space. I go, I live in that area and drive by there all the time. Love to see a beautiful business sitting there.
Kia or Hyundai are going to want to park cars in your parking lot, worth that deal out early. You're all a canopy, you find them everywhere.
Kia's in the north and then, or the east.
Looking busy.
Cole, did you have any more comments?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it actually comes back to, because I feel like I've got like two voices in my head, the same that's been expressed, wanting to see you succeed and seeing the use that you're recommending to be not disruptive, you know, because you've got light industrial right across the street and a car dealership on the other and then an off, it's like an interesting mix of places, so it's not like there's an immediate character for that corner that everyone would say, oh, that's really out of place, because there's, it could be one of four flavors. So definitely, that's the voice, I'm like, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. The other voice actually comes back to Jake, what you said earlier about this notion of planning and the purpose of planning and all of that and looking at the master plan and looking at the zoning and it's like, oh, we've got this local business, we want to help, but then we have applicants who may or may not be local business owners that want to gobble up the other three and do a warehouse there. And I don't know if we'll be able to say the same sentence of, oh, we really, we're looking forward to supporting a local business. And so then I wonder what we'll be standing on if they propose a similar use. And like, well, you're not around here, so we might not want three more warehouses on that corner. And so I was thinking, long-term, once it, if it ever leaves your hands, if it makes sense to have all of a sudden this chunk to start to be more warehouse use, because it seems like the warehouse use is what's needed to go to this next zone. I, I was looking at the usage and there's lots of things that could be done. And so I just have that other little nagging in my head is, now we're going to be talking about three more parcels in probably, you know, a month. And I don't, I guess the answer is yes to them too, if we're saying yes here. I mean, presuming they have to have all the standards and it'll be warehouses, so we'll just have more warehouses down there if we're going yes.
I, I think what, what I am encouraged by, you're saying you have precedence, that you create a quality commercial fronting look to the drive-by community.
Yeah.
And so, and, and that's what you intend to do here as well, so.
Yeah, less concerned about this immediate product, but I just don't know what we'll say to the next.
It's a good point. And I would hope that the, them being a local business doesn't have an effect on our vote. It's just a, hey, this is a cool story and, and this is awesome.
Sure.
As much as it is, do we feel, because I can't, maybe it was Lincoln who said, they, they could back out, that zone's approved, we could, we're going to have that product there, are we comfortable with that product there? Yeah, I, I guess one thing that I bring up that, that I, I agree with you, opportunity cost, what are we missing out on by putting a warehouse there? And frankly, we know how much we rely on those, the sales tax revenue from those car dealerships. That's maybe the only corner I could see Hyundai coming out with another line and saying, hey, we want to throw it across the street. And, and, and so I, I've considered that, I've thought of that through, over the last couple of days, but I, I'm still comfortable to move forward.
That's a good perspective.
And your perspective is extremely interesting and we talk about it all the time, where we see the standards kind of our building and then of our current building, which I don't even know what the, the use.
I think you're light industrial.
Yeah, it's sort of light industrial and then you look at some of the others that they install it and then it's, they pass the person.
Trashy, yeah.
And then they just kind of let it go and it's, I don't know what you guys do from your perspective.
Right.
Entertaining without making everyone else mad, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so I always think about, like, if it's, if we set it up in such a way, then you have to anticipate it can go, like, with a really good tenant, it's like, oh, that's great, but then it could go.
I, I think the thing that you can rely on is the, what Mike was talking about with the standards that are put in place for that area on what the face of that building has to look like. So it won't be just a warehouse, it has to have the entrances and the canopies and the different things in place, a glass on the main floor, things like that.
Yeah.
Great points.
And I guess the other part of that in my head was when we recently paid for this master plan and had committees and communities and it seems like there's some, at least textbook thinking that suggests having that all be homogeneous is a benefit. Like the planners thought that that was a good idea and now we're taking a piece unlike any of the other surrounding pieces and putting it right there. And so that was another thing where I'm like, I guess from the resident's perspective though, I think if I'm just driving around, I probably don't notice very often like the gradation and differences. So I don't know if I would notice much of the difference between what you're proposing and the Canopy buildings, just like as a resident. Seeing the maps, it's really stark, because there's these other commercials and, so I just was like, what, is, is there some wisdom that we're missing by switching this? Like if it was just the textbook, those consultants that came in and said, this is ideal planning for a city, what did we just do to, what are we doing by undoing that? Like what would they say is the, the loss of inserting a patch into?
I think one answer to that question could be, you know, the design thinking in past decades was you very much siloed and segmented different, you know, zoning and land uses. And now mixed use or having transitory uses is a little bit, seems to be more current. And secondly, this has been a vacant lot, probably earning a very low property tax revenue for the city, and now we'll have a, something come in that generates property tax, adds value there.
Yeah, for sure.
Will it, will it become another Canopy office startup building? Doesn't seem like office is thriving right now. I've walked through those Canopy buildings, I visit a lot of those startup companies, there's a good number of vacancies in them right now.
Yeah.
So anyway, that, that's, those are all really good points of kind of trying to find the balance, right?
I think trying to keep with the intent of, of that research and business zone, it really wanted, it really promotes a campus-like setting, you know, that where the landscaping matches, you know, it's a, where you're going to a good business park, people are proud of that in their community, these are, these are great-looking buildings and so, you know, the hope is that this would add to that.
And are the standards such that it does automatically or would a development agreement need to include some additional details to ensure that sort of cohesive feel?
I mean, the, these design standards for these office buildings are probably a little bit higher than what we would get in the general, that regional commercial zone.
For the building itself, but when you're saying like the campus-like feeling with their, their history has shown that they'll do it anyway, but
Yeah.
the next people, if there's not something in place, I worry that it would devolve.
Yeah, and some of that, the redevelopment agency, I believe, did the, you know, the curb gutter landscaping sidewalk in that area.
Yeah.
We've been maintaining that for a long time. And the, and the, and the regional commercial zone does require this type of sidewalk that, you know, a lot of landscaping along the street.
So. Cool. Well, thanks for hearing both voices.
Just glad you don't require Linden trees.
Yeah. Sure, got plenty of those around.
Yeah, plenty of them, they're dirty trees.
I've got one in my yard and it's always struggled. Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion unless there's any other comments.
Very good.
Seeing none, I'll move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten dash O, amending the Linden City general plan, future land use for the property located at three seventy-seven South, eight hundred West, from flex office to flex commercial as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion by councilmember Hoyt, seconded by councilmember Stewart. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, we'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is unanimous and then we'll have the applicant stay here as we go on to the next zoning map amendment item.
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Broderick, seconded by councilmember Hoyt, to open a public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, take it away.
Not much more to add, mayor, again, you're just, now reviewing the zoning of the property and changing that zoning from research and business to regional and commercial zone. The planning commission did give a unanimous recommendation on this item as well.
Yeah, formality. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Hoyt, seconded by councilmember Broderick, to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, counsel, back to you if you're ready to have any further discussion or?
Go ahead, Steve. Steve's on the roll.
Yeah. I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven dash O to amend the Linden City zoning map from research and business to regional commercial as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by councilmember Stewart, seconded by councilmember Hoyt. Any further discussion on the motion that's on the table? All right, hearing none, I'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You have two unanimous, thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and for waiting.
Son number two couldn't stay long enough. We had you here right at the very beginning, we made you wait two hours, so.
That's okay, thanks, Mike. Have a good day.
All right, counsel, that leads us to item number twelve. This is a review in action regarding the planning commissioner reappointment.
Yes, so Steve Johnson has been on the planning commission. This will be his fourth term. He's been on there for three terms already. He would like to serve one more term. He's currently serving as our planning commission chair. So we, the mayor and I are recommending that he be reappointed for another three-year term.
Hey, kind of Steve's.
Yeah.
Things are real easy. I don't know, we almost killed him with his heart, but if he's feeling he can survive another round.
Agreed. I move to approve the reappointment of Steve Johnson as a planning commissioner with a three-year term.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Hoyt, seconded by councilmember Broderick, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, counsel, for that. And I'll pass along to Steve your, your well wishes and compliments. All right, then we now are going to go to item number thirteen. So I'd like to vote to go into the closed session and then call a recess immediately after we're able to have the recording end.
I make the motion to enter the closed session for the city council to discuss the potential purchase or sale of real, real property and pending or possible litigation per Utah Code fifty-two dash four dash two oh five and all the other numbers.
Okay, I have a motion by councilmember Broderick, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Hooley, let's do the roll call.
Steve Stewart, aye.
Van Broderick, aye.
Cole Hooley, aye.
Carolyn Lundberg, aye.